I'm sorry. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Harrisburg City Council Legislative Session, Tuesday, May 29, 2018. I'm going to submit an order at 6:05 PM. Mr. Petrowski, please do the roll call.
Mr. Allott.
Present.
Ms. Daniels.
Here.
Ms. Green.
Present.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Madsen.
Here.
Mr. Majors.
Miss Williams.
Here. For the record, Mr. Majors is excused this evening. Moving on to the invocation, Mr. Allott.
We could all just take a minute and pause and bear heads in remembrance of Donna Warren and sending thoughts and prayers to her family. Donna lost her life on May 25th when she was murdered outside of a gas station here in the city. So we could just pause and commemorate her.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allott. For the Pledge of Allegiance this evening, we have the pleasure of Mr. Hong Lee, who is the President of the Youth Commission for the City of Harrisburg. So he will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Lee.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And thank you, Mr. Lee. Moving on to Communications. We have none this evening, courtesy of the floor. Anyone in the middle? Anyone to my left?
Good morning, good evening, sorry, members of council, Madam President, members of the administration, and the young man who led us in the Pledge of Allegiance. It's that time of the year again when we get to consider as a community what we will do collectively with funds that are ultimately our tax dollars that have been accrued at the federal level and ultimately come back down to the state and local level. As you know, in the instance of Harrisburg, it is Harrisburg City itself rather than the county or any larger governmental entity that gets to make those decisions. So I always look to the city government to give ear to all aspects of our population and all segments of our community. I am Les Ford. I represent the Heinz Minnicker Senior Center. So once again, I will be hopefully interacting with you over the course of the next month while you make that very important decision about how our tax dollars are allocated here locally. We do not get that opportunity in many instances. In this one, we do get it, and I respectfully ask that council and the administration take that very seriously. I've had the opportunity over the course of the last couple of months to interact with the Department of Aging of the state on a couple of different occasions, with the county's Agency on Aging on a couple of different occasions. And one thing we can all agree on is that the number of senior citizens in the state of Pennsylvania is growing. It is one of the most rapidly growing, thank God, populations in the state and in the country for that matter. So I am here to make a plea once again that you do your best to allocate some of those funds to, in our particular instance, the Heinz Minnicker Senior Center. It is the most active senior center in Dauphin County, bar none. Nobody questions that statistic. We just happen to have the privilege of having it here in Harrisburg, and it is my privilege to be an advocate for that center and that population. Our numbers are high again. Our programs are growing. This year, we will be entering into a partnership that expands our food bank program. So we'll be doing extended activities around our food bank. We will continue to do our Meals on Wheels, which we do every day, five days a week, rain, sleet, snow, dark of night, shall not stay these couriers. So I am making that plea once again, and I ask you to give ear to not me, I'm simply the representative, but to the members of the senior community in the city of Harrisburg and in particular, the members of the Heinz Minnicker Senior Center. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to my right? Left, I'm sorry. Okay.
Good evening. I will be brief. My name is Sheila Dowe Ford. I reside at 2033 Bellevue Road in Harrisburg, and I stand before you today as the Executive Director of Impact Harrisburg. Some months ago, of course, we gave a brief report to this body about, with Mr. Brian Hudson, about the work of Impact Harrisburg. I'm pleased to report that we continue. We are working with the projects that we identified and we had a discussion about with all of you, and we are hopeful that within the next few months I'll be able to come back here and say we have more projects that are completed. We are moving ahead with the multimodal project. Let me say this, I think it is incumbent upon me as the Executive Director and a resident of the city to provide you with these regular updates. I hope you will indulge me in that regard because I think you need to know how those dollars are being spent. Let me say, one of the big challenges that we have is that we really want a senior representative from the administration to come to our meetings. We have extended an invitation to Mr. Papenfuss on a few different occasions. We have extended an invitation to Mr. Woolley on a few different occasions. We can't seem, though, to get them to attend our meetings. They're the third Tuesday of every month. They're at PHFA. We have a wonderful board that is comprised of professionals and civic volunteers from this community who care about this community a great deal. They take time out of their busy schedules to come to our meetings. I would like to, once again, formally and publicly extend that invitation to you, Mr. Papenfuss, and to Mr. Woolley, and I hope that you will accept and come and visit us. We have a very engaging board meeting. Everyone is invited, but we really would like to hear from the city administration because the notion of a partnership, of being able to communicate on a one-to-one basis, is very important. Many members of my board have yet to meet Mr. Woolley, who is the business administrator. They would like to meet him. These are the leaders in our community. They need that opportunity. I think that is important. I cannot stress that enough. Thank you very much. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have. You know where to find me at any time. Thanks so much.
You're welcome. Thank you. Anyone else to my left? Hearing none, we'll move on to approval of minutes. Approval of the legislative session minutes of May 8, 2018. Are there any omissions, deletions, corrections, council members? Hearing none, minutes will stand as such and approved. Moving on to reports of committees. Mr. Majors is not here this evening, so we will have his report at the next legislative session. And we move on to ordinance for first reading, Bill 5 of 2018. Mr. Petrowski, please read that into record.
Bill 5 of 2018 was moved by Mr. Madsen, seconded by Ms. Green. It's an ordinance appropriating emergency solutions grant program funds from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development for fiscal year 2018 and authorizing expenditure of such funds.
That will be placed in Community and Economic Development. Moving on to Bill 6 of 2018.
Bill 6 of 2018 was moved by Mr. Madsen, seconded by Ms. Daniels. It's an ordinance appropriating Community and Development Block Grant Funds from the United States Department of Housing Development for fiscal year 2018 and authorizing expenditure of such funds.
That also will be placed in Community and Economic Development. Moving on to Bill 7 of 2018.
Bill 7 of 2018 was moved by Mr. Madsen, seconded by Ms. Green. It's an ordinance appropriating Home Investment Partnership Program Funds for the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development for fiscal year 2018 and authorizing expenditure of such funds.
Thank you. Moving on to ordinance for amendment, we have none this evening. And we move on to ordinance for final passage, we have none as well. Moving on to resolutions, Resolution 61, 2018.
Resolution 61 of 2018 was moved by Ms. Williams, seconded by Mr. Allott. It's a resolution to enter into a master service agreement with Barton Greene's DPC for engineering, technical assistance, and consulting services for the various projects supporting the Department of Public Works.
That will be placed in Public Works Committee. Moving on to Resolution 62.
Resolution 62 of 2018 was moved by Ms. Williams, seconded by Mr. Allott. It's a resolution confirming the appointment of Shoshawn Dial Snowden to serve as a member of the Board of Directors of the Susquehanna Area Regional Airport Authority.
Is there any questions or comments on Resolution 62, council members? Reclarify the term limit.
So for Resolution 62, for Ms. Dial, her term will expire January 5, 2020.
Okay. Seeing as no questions, please call the vote.
Mr. Allott.
Yes.
Ms. Daniels.
Yes.
Ms. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Madsen.
Yes.
Mr. Majors.
Miss Williams.
Yes.
Resolution 62 passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 63.
Resolution 63 of 2018 was moved by Ms. Williams, seconded by Mr. Allott. It's a resolution confirming the appointment of Ronald K. Rouse to serve as a member of Board of Directors of the Susquehanna Area Regional Airport Authority, and his term will expire January 5, 2022.
Okay. Any questions or concerns, council members? Please call the vote, Mr. Petrowski.
Mr. Allott.
Yes.
Ms. Daniels.
Yes.
Ms. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Madsen.
Yes.
Mr. Majors.
Miss Williams.
Yes.
Resolution 63 passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 64.
Resolution 64 of 2018 was moved by Mr. Madsen, seconded by Ms. Daniels. It's a resolution approving the fiscal year 2018 Community Development Block Grant Program, CDBG Home Investment Partnership Program, Home and Emergency Solutions Grant, ESG, along with 2018, 2022 Five-Year Strategic Plan and First Annual Action Plan.
That will be placed in Community and Economic Development Committee. Moving on to Resolution 65.
Resolution 65, 2018, was moved by Mr. Madsen, seconded by Ms. Green. It's a resolution approving the preliminary final subdivision land development plan submitted by Major John Greiner on behalf of the Salvation Army Harrisburg Capital City Region to construct a new Salvation Army Harrisburg headquarters located at 506 South 29th Street.
That also will be placed in Community and Economic Development. Moving on to Resolutions 66.
Resolution 66 of 2018 was moved by Mr. Madsen, seconded by Ms. Green. It's a resolution approving the preliminary final subdivision land development plan submitted by Joe Davidson on behalf of Executive House Apartments to convert existing commercial space on the first floor of 101 South 2nd Street into 15 apartment units.
That also will be placed in Community and Economic Development Committee. Moving on to old business, council members, any old business? Hearing none. Moving on to new business, council members, any new business, starting with Ms. Green?
No.
Okay. Mr., you don't want to announce your meetings?
Oh, sorry.
Okay. Said no, no.
We will be having the workshop on the CDBGs and how they'll be allocated June 5 at...
And the land development plans.
And the land development plan. What time is that? 5:30? At 5:30. Here, at the City Hall.
Okay. Is that it?
That's it.
Okay. Any other new business council members?
I'll just skip one of them.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, man.
I didn't know if you had any.
You didn't ask?
Of course, we don't want to skip you, Mr. Johnson.
I just want to, I just kind of want to reiterate that we do have this doing business with the City of Harrisburg Capital Region Water, just for the public knowledge on June 1st. So that's going to be a side event. But one thing I do want to, just a question for the administration, I was able, I've been getting different emails in regards to like the event and the different partners on it. One thing I realized as far like a representative, I was wondering why like the African-American chambers wasn't included? That's why I like different members, like, you know, I feel like maybe they could have been included or possibly the PA Diversity Coalition of like, because I know there are two big entities within the region representing minorities in regards to representation. I'm not sure if the one was extended and, you know, but I just want to make sure that we're kind of...
That's a looking comment, yeah.
Yeah.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. Mr. Parker, could you come to the mic? Thank you.
So the purpose of this workshop is to make sure that we have an understanding and availability for contractors of all kinds, small businesses, to get them to be aware of how you do business, how you get certified, things like insurance, things like bonding, things like access to funding. Okay? So we brought together all those people who would actually do the information sessions. So these are the people who would actually work with the contractors to say, hey, sign up here, how do you do the insurance, how do you do the bonding, we'll give you the paperwork. So it actually is a one-on-one kind of a informational session, a real working session. People can just come in, you know, talk to a contractor, talk to a certifier about how to get started. They can be there 10 minutes, they can be there half an hour. So we didn't include networking groups. We included, we thought for this working session, it is actually how do you do business, how do you get those things done to start your business?
But it does those different partners, like, there's other chambers.
Well, there's lots of partners, but we didn't invite all, every single partner that we could think of. We just wanted those who could actually do the tie-ins for a small business. So...
So I understand what you're saying in regards to what the focus of the meeting is and the people who are actually maybe facilitating certain parts of the meeting as far as like the listed partners on there, not all the partners, like, there was a list of probably like 20 partners on there. I'm sure that they're not all facilitated within that meeting. There was a list that was like a partner helping, I don't know how you guys define it, who was listed on there, but it just seems as though like, if I was a, you know, and we do have, you know, as we're looking at, you know, all diverse business entities, we do have a high concentration of minority businesses.
Correct.
And with them encompassing so much minority businesses within the African-American Chambers of Commerce and the Grand Key Diversity Coalition, they, you know, a lot of minority businesses within the city do network within them. So I was interested to kind of see why them as partners, and even from a financial, from even a financial end of it, I know that Impact Harrisburg is kind of involved in that too as well. I know as far as through like their funding of the Harrisburg...
Impact Harrisburg doesn't do the funding.
I mean, but they...
It's Community First, and Community First Fund is going to be there.
Yeah.
So they will be, they will be, they will be...
Wait, excuse me. Ms., okay, Ms. Ford, wait a minute, just a minute. Okay.
The Community First Fund is overseeing the Business, Harrisburg Business Opportunity Fund, not Impact Harrisburg. So that, so they will be there. But what we wanted to concentrate on is not just networking, it's for minorities. So DGS is going to be there to say, here's how we certify, so that you can participate in the forum building that's coming out in October.
Yeah.
So that PennDOT is there to say, you know what, we're a third-party certifier. Here's what you do. Those are the questions we get. We understand networking, you know, Credic has a chamber, the African-American Chamber, that's opportunity to network. We get that. But how do you actually do the business? How do you actually get funding to say, I need to go buy drywall, and how do I get there? How do I get the $1,000 to go buy the drywall at Lowe's? That's what it's, it's actually a working session. So that's how we pick those vendors. We pick the vendors who could actually sit down with a contractor and say, here's how you, here are the forms, here, give me your card, give me your capability statement so that we can make sure you're on our list. And these are for the minorities. These are for, these are for everybody, every small business that needs to be at the table. There are going to be so many contracts coming out and construction jobs in the next five years, and we want to make sure that those people get there. We want to make sure those people can participate. But they don't understand the process, or they're, they need a face. So, you know, PennDOT, you can see it on their website, but they don't see a face, and they don't understand how to do that.
And I think, everything you're saying, I 100% agree with you. I think, I think this, I think where a lot of the disconnect kind of happens is as far as, this is not necessarily a networking event, it's a workshop event, I understand that part of it. But the way people find out about events like this or even attend events like this is through networking. So as far as just like, for instance, if you were to read like the list, and it'll point out like the, you know, Latino Connections or the Central PA Gay and Lesbian Chamber of Commerce, so like if you were another Chamber of Commerce or had your own form of network, you may have felt not included.
Well, they received, both Impact Harrisburg and the African-American Chamber received, you know, the invitation and said that they, you know, certainly could come, certainly would participate, but we have limited room for vendors, we have limited room for tables, and we wanted to make sure that the workshop tables were there. But Impact Harrisburg got an invitation before we even sent anything out to the public, as did the African-American Chamber, and that's why Elise is going to be there representing both Community First Fund and the African-American Chamber, and she's been at the table with us.
Just announced the date again, so people know.
Okay. Yeah, I just want to make sure that, you know, especially, you know, just within our, within our small community, and I know with the different, the different contracts and things that are coming out is, you know, we just have to make sure we're all moving in one accord, and that's the only thing I really want to say. I understand, I understand your efforts, I understand what the purpose of this event is, and I think has the potential to be very, very successful because there is a gap of people not knowing what to do to get to the next step. But I think at all ends that we have to try to preserve all type of partnerships when we're trying to do these events because it's these different silos that sometimes get created through, and sometimes it's with, it's not with malicious intent or anything, but sometimes people look at it from a different, from a different purview, and I'm trying to, and I can understand why sometimes. So that's why a lot of times I'll ask the question and kind of say, what we can, what can we do to make sure that everyone's at the table, we're all speaking the same language, and we all have to share the same goal where we're just moving in a direction that's going to benefit the entire city?
We have, and I agree with you, and we have 18 vendors there who actually are doing the contracting. So that, that is key because we want those contractors there to say, hey, I know you're going to have something coming up soon, how do I sign up? So that, that's kind of the connection, so that if you're a contractor and you can say, you know, I've got these jobs lined up, August, September, October, you know, a small contractor, come and tell us what you can do, sign up with us. And so that's the connection. That's really what we want to see, that those, that those connections are made right there at that time. And so we have 18 vendors, and we have over 65 people that have signed up to attend. So, you know, we're pretty excited about that, and let's see how it goes. We want this to be ongoing, we want to have another one, maybe not next month, but the month after. It might even be the same thing because if people miss it this time, we'll see what, we'll see how it worked out, and then we can, you know, we can tweak it from there.
And one thing, one thing too, I just want to point out too, is, and this is where I can feel sometimes people involved in certain organizations can feel, can feel a type of way, because there's a difference between receiving an invitation to an event and it has to be like a vendor or partner to that. So even though we may do everything we can to make sure all is included, I think we have to be cognizant to making sure when we're asking someone to step into the position of partner, that it's, that we're also being inclusive all the way around. I think, like I said, I still think the event has great potential. I think it was something that we could have really, really pushed for to make sure one of these key chambers or one of these key entities that represents, you know, I would say, the core of our community could have been more than invited and been more of invited.
I mean, I certainly will take that, you know, under advisement, but I think what we're saying is we wanted to make sure that we had enough room for the vendors who are actually doing the hiring, and that's what we keyed in on. There isn't, there wasn't enough room to, you know, except, you know, all, everybody, but we wanted to make sure those contractors there who are going to have jobs right there at this meeting saying, I'm going to have a job, can, you know, how do you qualify? And I think a lot of our partners, while they're absolutely valuable and we want to network with them, we just didn't have enough room to have other partners that didn't have the contracting and could be right there to help those people at that time.
Thank you.
Ms. Dial.
Good evening. Just wanted to let you know that last Monday, Charlie White, the Director of Business Development, and myself specifically met with Lila Nelson of the African-American Chamber and Elise specifically to talk about and explore possibilities of a partnership between the City of Harrisburg and the African-American Chamber. So me being new in my role, I wanted to find out what our existing relationship is. I put inquiries into all of the working chambers, so the Gay and Lesbian Chamber and the African-American Chamber, to inquire what would be a membership that could come out of our office, the Social Equity and Affirmative Action Office, to find out, because I think in symbolic and in content, we should be members, and then we should also explore partnerships. So that was a very successful meeting. It was about an hour, and we talked about a lot of different pieces, from CBDG funding to, you know, exactly finding out what the African-American Chamber is doing right now. Are they certifying? They are not. Are they exploring a partnership with the Eastern Minority Development Supplier? They are not. So just trying to kind of figure all that out and also figure out our roles and share. So I hear your point and want to let you know that Charlie and I each felt that same kind of what ground are we on, what is our relationship? And so that is an email that is going back and forth between Elise, Lila, and myself and Charlie.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Ford, did you want to say something? Sheila.
Oh.
I know you had a, you had a statement when Ms. Parker was speaking. Come to the mic, please.
Let me make this very brief and say that as the representative of Impact Harrisburg, with the understanding, full understanding that the funds that have been put in place for the million-dollar Harrisburg Business Opportunity Fund, I think it is incumbent upon all of us, I view that word twice tonight, I'm not sure why, but I have, but to really acknowledge not only the contribution of Impact Harrisburg, and I'm talking about my board now, I just represent the board, but also the contribution of PHFA, which placed $650,000 into that fund. That's the, probably the single largest contribution that we've ever received in many, many respects in the city for the sole purpose, remember, of providing funds to underserved populations, okay, loans. And so we, our commitment is to remain intimately connected to that fund and to that degree that, to the degree that, that Community First Fund, as Ms. Parker pointed out, is the administrator of the fund. That doesn't mean that we're off the hook because they report back to us on a quarterly basis about how those funds were used, and we still look forward, and I say this to the city administration, to the opportunity for the city administration to become a contributor to the Impact Harrisburg Business Opportunity Fund. That's important. We're taking care of the underserved, that's the objective. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Can I add one quick comment on that? We're going to have a press conference on this tomorrow. I think what we ought to emphasize here is that everyone's invited. It's free and open to the public. You can register in advance, and that is welcome at the city's website. You can link to it through that or the Capital Region website, and, but you don't have to register, and you can show up. You also don't even have to be a contractor or somebody involved in the construction trades, maybe you're just interested in learning more about opportunities and projects that are happening. Also, I think you're confusing the term partner with vendor. I certainly consider everyone a partner, Diversity Coalition certainly a partner, African-American Chamber a partner, Impact Harrisburg a partner. I think we're all partners in this together. I think they had limited space for vendors, and they chose certain vendors to be there. But this is actually the, all of us partnering together to create a free, open, really positive event. So let's at least end on the note that it's Friday, 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM, free and open to everyone to come and find out more. And in terms of the types of activities, we'll discuss this more tomorrow, but there's a, there's a whole workshop discussion being led by PennDOT on how to become certified. That's happening over the course of the day. There is a panel by the Community First Fund on the five Cs of credit. There is another panel discussion being led by Gem Group and TLC Construction on, you know, how to do work in the city. So I think there's a lot for people to learn, and I certainly consider all of us partners in the endeavor.
Mr. Johnson, you have that?
I am there.
Okay, okay. Mr. Allott, any?
I'm here.
And Ms. Daniels, anything?
No, just something lighter but darker. The Governor's Advisory Commission on Asian-American Pacific Islanders is having a free screening tomorrow at the State Museum. It's a free movie, you just have to register. It's a viewing of relocation Arkansas at the aftermath of incarceration.
Thank you. I just want to announce for Mr. Major, who's not here tonight, his upcoming Public Works Community Meetings, the one scheduled for June 6 that he had scheduled at the Boys and Girls Club, it will be held at the Harrisburg Armory, and that's at 14th and Carter Street at 5:30 PM.